Well, now, call to order regularly the Lake Board of Town Council, number 10, 12. We will leave out in person and also organize any... And yeah, an opportunity to review the agenda, whether there be changes, additions?
Madam Mayor, I have one addition on the new business, which is exploring a new crosswalk, cross Route 64, 74 at the ABC Liquor Store, cross through the Lord Michael.
Okay, can you add additions to the agenda? No motion?
Madam Mayor, I think we've reached the agenda for the session.
Second?
Second, ma'am.
Call of favor?
Uh, I have...
And the agenda stands as amended. And we will begin with the town manager for the new additions.
Yes, uh, just the main thing we want to point out in the fact is, it's based on its calendar, that's something considered in the budget, development calendar, that we do this year, 2022. And so, one of the first things I will be doing is sending a survey to the commissioners individually next week to start that process, but you'll be adopting that calendar tonight to kick off our budget development process. I have interviewed staff relative to their goals and that particular process, did that on Monday, so just to kind of give you an idea that we are starting the budget process and we move forward with that. Kurt is here, he's going to talk to us, uh, to... Yes.
I wanted to bring your attention to the pin stock inspection, and I sent out an email inviting those pipelines, they're waiting in the pin stock or standing anywhere. But I thought I would elaborate in some detail about what is involved in the pin stock, so that you're fully aware. So, it's going to be different because we're not going to have a formal cut inside of the pipe. So, the way that you get into the pin stock is to have a man laying on the large, but with a butterfly back. It's a 24-inch open, you take the plate off, and then you have to step down on the baffle. Baffle for the butterfly mouse, if you turn it this way horizontally. You slide yourself down the step, when you do that, for me, a man like this is about a cup of beer. Then you have to kneel down like this, and you slide off the baffle, and then just slide onto the pin stock floor, which is probably a differential of about three to three and a half feet. That part's easy, it's going the other way, just a little bit of a check. So, you have to climb up on the baffle, you crawl, baby crawl, and then when you're over the opening, stand up, and then there'll be plenty of people around to help you get yourself out of that pool. So, I just wanted to make sure you're aware of what it's like when you're at life form, anybody to come. I've talked to Dean Lindsay about this, and what we'll do is, we'll finish our inspection, we'll get all our work done and out of the way, and then we'll have an opening of a couple hours where it's a tool that anybody in there must... Is there any questions about that? Kurt, you'll be taking a video camera with you on?
Yes.
How is video taken?
Just to chase.
Yeah, I was, I think, starting to throw my, my name off the list, so I'll, I'll depend on your video.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Kurt.
Rest of my items and end report to Madam Mayor, that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to the council liaison reports, I'm not sure exactly who has met this one, but thank you for sharing.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I can start with the UAB. So, the efforts of the UAB right now are focused on policy development, and the update for this month is that the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality has provided a response, first set of comments in return to the engineering report that was submitted by Lobella. And they have a number of concerns, Lobella is aggressively pursuing all those questions that were provided, but a brief explanation of the areas that DEQ is looking at for response. One are some concerns about the dam interface between the sewer and the dam work that Schnabel is doing for us, they had some questions there, we're taking a closer look at exactly how the pipe would go through the dam, where it would go after that, so there's some additional work that needs to be done there, don't see any hurdles with that, and it just requires coordination with Schnabel and Lobella. Another is an environmental concern, which the key phrase that DEQ uses is secondary cumulative impact, and that's really the impact of the new sewer system of existing customers and new customers that would add, and what the environmental impact would be. There's some questions there, Kurt has recommended that we get with the people involved with the environmental quality in the state, sit down and address their concerns one-on-one, and we're working to do that. We want to get that right, we don't want the environmental, which is the more nebulous kind of non-engineering questions that are coming up, we want to make sure we're on the up and up, and I don't see the road to say, but it is a question. Another question was on the financial side, a little bit more deep, the state requires a little bit more detail on how we want to do the phasing, and how we're going to pay for it, for the phasing, and so, there's been a bunch of work behind the scenes, working with the North Carolina League of Municipalities, recent legislation has been passed to figure out a framework of how to pay for additional phases. And just briefly, what we have built is a framework, not only to use sewer fees, everyone knows that you can pay sewer fees and pay for more sewer development, but there's an amount of legislation out there that can support us in pursuing other sewer development fees, particularly from, for new users of the system, that we could go after to build a financial reserve to go into phase two. So, we're exploring those, we built the framework, and it's up to the UAB to take a look at that and decide what kind of fees we would, they would recommend that we impose as we go forward. So, it'd be a combination, so funding in general would be from multiple sources, we always knew that, but certainly from the SRF funding loan that we have, 12.5 million, additional availability fees and sewer development fees for new customers that come online, existing sewer use fees that are there, other fees that the, we know that the League of Municipalities is trying to get legislative oversight for, including sales tax. So, we're going to put all this together to achieve success in the additional phases. DEQ had a question about that, they didn't quite understand how we were going to do that, the initial cut was, they're satisfied with our answer, and we're incorporating that body of work into the response that was presented. Another area that they're looking at is more detail into the different phases. So, Lobella has done work that they briefed to us this morning, what the additional five phases would be to the system. Basically, what it looks like is five major sewer installation phases of collection system on the lake, and the last phase being the rehabilitation or reconstruction for the wastewater treatment. So, Lobella is separating that out into six phases, and we'll put that detail into the research report. And the last concern that they had was more detail into exactly what a hydraulic section would look like in the lake. So, what that, what that means is, they really want to take a look at what a section of the pipe in the lake would look like, what the manhole looks like, what a pump would look like, what the piping would look like to the next manhole or pump, just kind of a cross-section in general of what they would, what they would look like, and what we would be looking at once that was installed on the lake, which is a good thing for us to look at too, because if you think about it, we're going to have, we're going to get rid of the old manholes, we're going to have a new manhole with, you know, barriers that are around it, perhaps a navigation light on top, a little vent that comes out, and we certainly want something that is, that is aesthetically pleasing to us on the lake, but from the DEQ's viewpoint, they want to make sure it's functional. So, Lobella is going forward with additional design, that's normally we're going to the design phase to get that answered to the DEQ. So, the UAB has taken a look at all this, this is all going on behind the scenes, good news is, the whole, the whole process is proceeding, and we should, we hope, to get a final answer on the engineering report, environmental impact statement by December to move forward, so that...
Thank you. Is there something you can report to me?
Actually, uh, the ABC is meeting tomorrow via Zoom for the first time since March or April, that's scheduled on Zoom tomorrow, and then LAB did meet last week on Monday. Just a quick summary, um, the LAB discussed daily and weekly voting permits and their costs, and it's been determined that with the current schedule of that cost for the weekly those bets, we most employers opted to purchase of six daily for this rather than purchasing the weekly for that. More discussed options there, they are making the recommendation, but they're coming to bring a condition to increase the budget for the cost of $60, $60, although you can't give that many, many dollars, with the minus six days instead of the weekly, correct me?
Yes.
A lot of discussion made, had about white folks on the lake, and as everyone knows, that's a big topic in the size of the agents and different things about that, Dean is doing some further, you know, gathering of information from other lakes to see how that is handled. A lot, during the discussion, determining ways to make this work, and it's suggested by me that we get, that we may just have to get all the people along these boats together, they'll then hear for the problem, figure out how to solve it, and make them part of, part of the solution as well. You know, these folks are getting up to 100, 130, 140,000 dollars and stuff like that, and we don't want this. We, we say a few reasons, and for damage to the seawalls and stuff like that, that interests us, so they're working on that and trying to pick together things to make a recommendation to us. And that's pretty much it for the evening.
Thank you very much. Now, if you want?
Don, the planning is not me, last month, we do have a meeting a week from today, and it's on 9/3, like, we're on the way to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, the Lake District's bill board did not meet last month, but we do have meetings to go. This month, there's a meeting agenda there, there is one piece with the community development, piece to the chairman, I want to make sure that we include it in the, in the schedule with the set, that's the NCGS, NCTV, we talked a little bit about, that's going to come up at the same time that our, our budget plan process does, you want a person, so I don't have to do that, so it just kind of hit my radar itself. Uh, Lake, the Parks and Rec Board did meet, we assume on the, on the, uh, given discussion, so, Diver Watts and Alberd are getting a lot of play, it has been a very, very good month for our parks and recreation trial system here, and town, we're hitting numbers that are above last year's numbers already, even despite it's 1-1 town, so, the, the old adage, the gas tank escape vacation is truly taking a hold, and Lake doesn't give a thought this day, so, uh, they, they, a couple members of Parks and Rec did ask about the, the slips at the Marine, just out of curiosity, so, there were 100 new force slips taken, so, that product is a redundancy, so, good as ever being all of us, or something that's been successful, and already is getting more than 80% of its use out of it, so, um, there are several new members on Parks and Rec, so there's a lot of new ideas that are kind of getting tossed around for some of the use of our trail systems, the Diver Watts name, the trail came up, was a big part of that meeting, and one of the members was talking about using Trail Ops, was on that course as a biking trail, and they are going to talk to Mr. Whitmer about that, it was built really as a high control system near, near the school and Buffalo Creek Trail Park, just with more bike trails, so, there was a good discussion that kind of surrounded that piece with that. So, the Farm Bridge has done very well this year, they did have another break-in on one of their donation boxes, they had just been empty, so, um, they, they do not kind of lose that much money with that, so, Parks and Rec also discussed golf course piece, like 718 golfers in October, which made a total of the year 7,254. As we're getting into later season, the golf is starting to trend downwards, and we also had some discussion about the concession agreement, the golf course that is coming up, with, as we're entering the tenure phase of the current agreement, we do have to, under state legislature, go to an RFP and look at renegotiation that, so, discussion came about with that also. In the same thing that LAB has done, the monetization of Lake Hughes Beach, Parks and Rec is still discussing that particular piece, in line with some of the new business tonight, Commissioner Ewer up at home, peddlers ordinance and concession agreements may be something that we're market, and they look at peddlers ordinance especially for vendors and such to be set up there, so, they are looking at some, some smaller opportunities for monetization within that department, glad it could share promise for it, so, next meeting, we descend to Kurt. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Um, I think that is all of our words, so, we will move on to our public speaker, Mitchell doing part, and we are open now to the public, if they wish to speak their opinion.
We do have to try a few members of the public attending Zoom, nobody has interviewed it.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, we do want people to know that that is an option for a lot of why we need pricing, thank you very much. We'll go on into our consent agenda. I would have an opportunity to review the consent agenda, wonder if you're motioned to accept consent agenda, are there any changes?
I'm not going to be able to accept consent agenda. I'll second the motion.
On Dever?
Aye.
In the consent agenda, here's a three-year written, having your unfinished business,
we will spawn a new business, first adding to what's our golf course operations?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yep.
Hold on. While Dean's coming up, we just want to, just kind of set some context here, we've asked Dale Minnick to come and brief us on the golf course operation, there were a set of questions that Dean sent to Mr. Minnick, and he responded back unbeknownst to Dean, they got dropped in the spam folder, and so, they've been there for a little while, and so, and some of the recent conversations that we found, and so, we passed those on to you, and so, Mr. Minnick is here with us tonight, and referring to some of the things that Patrick Bryant just referred to, we just want to have a discussion about golf course operations, and that feed into the larger discussion, studying that property, so, Dean, that had consent piece.
Okay, basically, I was just going to update you a little bit from our last meeting earlier this month, the AM meeting, a couple of things that were told was, I had an RFP out there, that RFP has been refined and been resent to William, and also, there was a request that I do an RFP for appraisers, that appraiser, that RFP is done, working with Mitchell here to create some newly, some new maps of the area, some of you mentioned discounting some of that land as far as trails or whatever, so, Mitchell's working with me to create a map with that RFP, and then we'll be ready to send it out to you.
Well, that, the info that you're putting together, Rachel, without help others?
I can include the property, I have access to the state's LIDAR, and I can create a two-foot property allocation anywhere to that.
Looks like, I'd say within the next week or so, that will all be ready to go out to, if you guys have any appraisal companies that you know of, if you can shoot me a text message or an email, I'll make sure that they get one of the, one of those licenses.
So, on the map, map development, Dean and I met recently, and a little discussion about what we'd like to do is take some of the, all the plans that we've developed over the years, let Mitchell take a look at that and create a draft map, and then Dean and I and Mitchell, and then we have asked Commissioner Bryant to sit down with us to help just create, revise that draft and get it to a point where we can bring it back to you guys, for you guys to look at and approve, and once we get that map approved, that will be an attachment to that RFP, so we'll have an understanding, what areas are we talking about commercial, what areas we're talking about residential, recreation, trails, so and so forth, so we'll all be on the same page before that's attached to the RFP, but you will see that map again, but we want to work with Commissioner Bryant and those old maps first, and then we'll bring it back to you.
Just that was the stuff that I wanted to give you guys, and, well, talk about that, thanks.
Just want to ask some questions, you're like... Then, one thing we were interested in is on Dan and the field behind the particular fault like you were not in the fall, then it's like, right, I'm using the golf course now, that's, that's the third highest zip code for members, the third, third highest, yes, Rutherford tends to highest zip code, and Mill Springs the second highest, I would say that's mainly because of the...
Is that for river ships down?
Memberships.
No, it's not that place or anything like that.
Correct.
And what is the total number of rivers?
We have 238. And how many of them live here?
Probably close to 100.
That's maybe, and majority of the memberships were sold two years ago, that's why they don't have that, and, and that just constrains our system, of course, a lot of the 3746 is outside the, so, correct.
Yeah, Mayor, Dale, first, I'd like to say, I walk over there every day, the work that you put into that golf course is amazing, and the effort and the passion that you put into it, without question, is good to go, of course, you know that the dilemma that we're in is that subsidizing that operation and then having to do all of our infrastructure work is just so difficult for us to wrestle with, so my question really comes, comes down to this, is there any way that you could adjust the business model of golf course operations for you to make your living and continue to do what you do over there, but to eliminate the subsidy for the town going over to the...
Now, Jeff and I do almost everything, we do have to, we do what helps our time, yeah, that's seven days a week, we have 65 days a year, so it's nice I do go on, yeah, and originally, we went in thinking we could grow it enough, subsidy would be reduced, yeah, and that, that certainly hasn't happened. Whether it be weather problems, a couple of years, 2004, it's raining, but we didn't have 4,000 rounds probably been because of the rain, yeah, it was another season where we had over half the weekends were raining, but it's just, that goes into our pricing structure, just over the rain fees and car fees and such, that's comparable to the golf courses. Do you need to jump on, you know, on the weekend, we charge $35 for 18 holes at the golf park, yeah, you win 60 or 65, the play would be cut in half. A lot of our play now is senior couples, especially to tourists, they may be staying at the resort for a week, they'll play twice there, and at least once at our place, to say, I need to enjoy myself, our course goes shorter. That's often what we get when people get done, or when we had fun, that's what comes down to, when they played that, what they said was, they had fun, and that's the key, affordable fun.
Yeah, I want to say, echo what Mr. Miller said, I know how much you work out there, I'm, I could walk on that for a long time, you know, I know, that's could be, um, pretty important to you, because I did, I know how, sort of period, and how hard you work out that, I, I really wish we could all of a sudden have a nice tantrum, but we can share the, the way it is, share, uh, $35 on the weekend, what, you know, what's Apple Valley and, and all that, you know?
You know, I try not to pay attention to the money because their rates change during the day and things like that, but if you couldn't do 65, I don't know, yeah, plus if you're a member, the people that live there, I think we have a different rate, you know?
And for your manholes, that, that has to affect on being an apple course, so, I think somewhat, do you think?
Very few people complain about that, but, but as I tell them, well, you don't want to see if you can do better the second time around on the same hole, that's how I saw it, right, there's all that, I can roll that money, yeah, most people don't play mine, so that works, that's a big question we get to, but why didn't they ever build a second mine? Nine holes a court, or else nine a year. I think that's the one thing I would say in favor of the golf course too, is it was rated the third best nine-hole golf course in the state of North Carolina, that's as old as the dam, and as old as the Lake Board, that's an old asset. I understand the financial side, believe me, as I was older, they understand I mined up at one time, I didn't see any golf courses, that's just me, and because I'm in the business, sometimes it happens, you just have to do the, well, the community market?
In general, you know, golf, like, maybe all the situations go on our mouth, helping some of that, so, you know, it's been suffering, it's been suffering.
It's up 17% this year, up less than, and the, the thing was, we were really getting bad press, because people were like, oh, golf's expensive, golf's expensive, you can make it expensive, you can buy a $5 driver, we build this drift shop, and buy a $5 driver, that's the same one that you can own a weapon ball, you can make it expensive, but it doesn't happen. As far as, uh, to be a golf course superintendent, you got to put everything into it, this is the sixth golf course I've been at for very months, and every time I've left, it was a side of the league only place I could recharge and start again, and that would be the same thing here, and put everything that you could, like you could, in nine years that we've been doing, some days it wears us out, to say the least, but it's, you do warm-up of golf, and you could be out there every morning and see it, or every evening, back around and see the field, so, it's needed, so.
Again, you know, Dale, just, just so you understand, and so, this is not about your wife, we, we think the world of you and what you've done, but it's, but one thing I just want to, and to get it on the record, the problem that we really have, and you would think that maybe it's not that much money to subsidize a golf course, but when folks look at us and we're trying to get financial backing for huge infrastr... But when folks look at us and we're trying to get financial backing for huge infrastructure projects, when they see a subsidy such, such as that one, it puts in jeopardy our ability to, to, you know, when, when they, when they look at that. And that, so um, we have a tough decision. Uh, request that you do what you do uh, for, as long as we have you, the contract I think is up in April of twenty-two. Um, we have not made a decision yet, but we just wanted to hear from you and let you know from, and I think everyone on the town council would agree with me. We're very proud of what you do over there, day in, day out, and it's not about.
Well, I understand.
Okay.
We understand.
And you've got the most important parts.
Yeah.
All same time, so um, it is, it's a, it's a, an interesting time for our community, especially as small.
I, I just want to throw out some of the disc golf guys who run the tournament for the last two years.
Yeah.
They're interested in, obviously happy to get this, this golf course. That entails the whole property, so you know. Uh, if something comes up, they would be happy to speak to you about developing this golf course. Just doing it one weekend out of the year for now, this was awesome, one hundred and eighty-four people in thirteen states. We've all slowing down, uh, for whatever reason, I'm really not sure. Last year, for instance, it was awful hot in the afternoon, generally it's an afternoon, family, you know, trying to raise kids out. We go back to house, it's tourists, it's tourists, basically. Uh, your last question, you know, about, what, would you be extended to operate it to the golf course that I would see or something? That's such a hard question to answer. Just like you're going into your budget meeting, and the golf course I worked at in Indiana, you would go into the budget meeting and I'd ask for one point three five hundred million dollars. You know, just go with that. I'm going to comp question, golf course.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm doing it on less than twenty-five thousand materials. Yeah, so that, that's why I answered it that way. And it is, that's a precision, which is that, you know, okay, we're going to invest as much money in the golf. And that's, that's a hard, not necessarily the unit and standards.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you so much, not only for what you've done for the, for Lake Lorbe, but also for coming here tonight, being righteous enough to, to make that the exact question.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any questions the other do time we had?
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Dale.
If there are no other uh, observations or questions on the golf course, we will move on to um, our lead on new business, adoption of the golf space one project, Terry, we're in the consumer.
Happy to uh, to give a brief on this, uh. This memo and the phase one map basically just outlines the area that we're talking about, talking about. Drop into the sewer system, it basically defines the area and why, what principles were used to define this area. So uh, after you adopt this, you choose to do that, this is a back to uh, Lavella for them to use uh, in their art design or anything like that.
I, I would say with that, you know, you may take a look at the map and you'll notice right off that uh, the north side extension from the dam is relatively short. South side is much longer than we originally envisioned. And the guiding principle for that, really important to understand is, i- if you take a look at what we're trying to protect with the new sewer system in case of some sort of untoward catastrophic failure. It is vital, I think, to the community of Lake Lorbe that we get the new sewer system up to the highway nine corridor born in Ingalls um, as soon as, as possible. Um, if something were to happen on that leg of uh, of the lake, we potentially could lose the operation of Ingalls and Medical Center that exists up on Route Nine. And, and to me, um, it, it, a higher priority, definitely, to, to get that sewer system uh, down to that corridor. So that's why that, that, that uh, the map is evolving. Uh, we pick up a lot of uh, customers uh, along that path. You see on the south side there, uh, going to the left and uh, the potential for new customers is good as well. So that's why the map looks as it does. Lavella is convinced that this phase can be done with the allocated dollars that we have. Um, but I'll tell you that if we uh, start building this thing and we accomplish phase one and still have a cash reserve, we will uh, expand uh, phase one as required. But uh, to the town, what we're communicating is that's definite and uh, we can go after it. So that's why it looks the way it is.
Question for observations? Do I hear a motion to adopt?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the phase one map as presented by Lavella.
I'll say my motion, Madam Mayor.
On favor?
Aye.
The doc is uh, approved unanimously. All right, we'll go on and people of amendment, the Wither's driving out professional services to here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is uh, basically as, as described, it's amendment to the original agreement we had with Withered Rappinell for uh, design and permitting of the water. That is uh, their fire block code, what we're trying to achieve is to integrate that system in with uh, the town system so that they can rely on one another. And uh, we, and, and bring there uh, the town's existing wells and water supply uh, for fire block code. As it is right now, fire block code basically is an oscillating system that has one well. And so all the units over there are basically being supplied water in this one well. When we took this pump station in, we pulled water from the other side of the town and sent up to the tank that's the back plate. So it was a meeting, I mean, it's what they have. So what you have is basically agreement from Withered Rappinell to uh, to finalize the design. We have the, you know, have the design that was complete enough to submit to the EQ to get permit. And so now they want to finalize the design, the design, and then they will basically buy the contracted administration and uh, construction occupation to complete this, this, this project. So uh, that's what this, this is. And this, basically I'm asked that we uh, adopt, adopt a motion with any uh, recommendation from our public works director. And those are down in the staff, on the extracurriculars, uh, that they testified uh, to us. And so if you choose to adopt this, then I'll report this to Withered Rappinell for inclusion in the agreement and the agreement for that project forward. Any questions back there? We're trying to, to see if we can get it done this fiscal year, is basically the goal. So the real construction is probably the latter part of the year. And so I think we can get this done this fiscal year, that gives a certain. Anything you want to add there?
Any other questions, clients? If not, do I hear a motion to adopt?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I, I move that we approve the amendment to the Wither's driving out professional services agreement.
I'll say it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The new agreement is adopted as. All right, with one new addition for new business, our doc is the crosswalk of our six to four study.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, thank, thank you. So success story, uh, Lurden Market is doing great business with a grill now installed right across from the ABC store. Uh, but if you, if you were to observe, and I have on several occasions, uh, the traffic congestion and the families that move across from one parking lot to the other is substantial. Uh, and have a, a safety concern uh, on, on that corner. Uh, the process for uh, putting in a sidewalk to improve the safety on the corner includes getting the uh, North Carolina Department of Transportation involved. So as a matter of the record, uh, I would like to um, uh, have the uh, town manager work with his, his staff to explore the possibility of installing a crosswalk to protect the families going back and forth. The ABC lounge to the new Lurden Market.
Probably uh, Richard, you're aware of that, people come and use the parking area number one and they can go by boat as well. To go.
Yeah, great point, uh, Commissioner Goby. So, so our public doc, our doc is right there too. And, and as a matter of fact, there's always been a need for a crosswalk, just not to the extent that we would really push to have a traffic study done there. But now the dynamics certainly warrant us to take a look at that.
It's even difficult to, in a car, to get out of the parking lot from board and, and turn left. So you can imagine how much more quickly you can be in a car than the next to a walk inside, because you can't see, it's on the corner, you can't see either way.
Yeah, and um, and, and looking at that, one of the good things that the DOT did for us several years ago is they extended the twenty-five mile per hour zone from right before, before market to the top of the new sidewalk on Harris Drive. So that, that, because that's sort of the first piece of the puzzle where all of our crosswalks are in twenty-five mile per hour zone, have it placed there. Um, it, it seems that it would be better suited to have the crosswalk near the sign in ABC store, it's a little bit of a garden spot, or power at the uh, flagpole, right there. You, you get a better visual from, from the opposite direction than now that it's further into the, the loading dock. So, but it's a good, yeah.
So, so um, town manager, then you have the, the uh, authority from the town council to pursue that.
Yes.
And get back to us as the local.
Yes. We do that.
And that concludes our new business. Uh, we are going to propose our, and for those that have no questions.
Madam Mayor, my motion will go in for the G S M three, that's going to be one, take three, for the session, a purpose discussion, for the cost of the living things, and for the purpose of discussion of first.
For second.
Certainly.
On favor?